Okay, whoops. Is it? All right. I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Doesn't seem like it. There we go. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. There's some great seats left up in the front row that people with season tickets didn't show up. Welcome to sit up there now.
Thank you, Chris.
Once this starts, there will be no food service in the front row though. Chris'll move now. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of myself and Vice Mayor Bain and our entire council, thank you for spending your Monday night with us for the State of the City address. Tonight's State of the City address, we'll get into the meat of it a little bit later, but it's the title, "People: Our Community's Greatest Asset." I think you're gonna have a good time tonight hearing about the people and the organizations made up of people in Redwood City. As I call this meeting to order, I want to welcome everyone who's not only here, but we also have people watching online and people watching on Penn TV. And thank you for the extra coverage tonight. You can tell by all the cameras that are here, the equipment in the back room, that we've got a good showing. For those of you that could benefit from Spanish translation, I think if they need that, it'd be the back table, they can get you set up for that. So if you'd like to do that, you can do that as well. So with that, City Clerk Von der Linden, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aguirre.
President.
Councilmember Borgans.
Here.
Councilmember Gee.
Here.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Mazur.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bain.
Here.
Mayor Seibert.
Here. Please rise, and Councilwoman Borgans will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We will have a public comment period. I do have three speakers' cards. Are there any other speakers that would wish to speak at public comment? Okay. With that, the first speaker is Teresa Ramirez, followed by Merrily Robinson. Oh, there you are.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Teresa Ramirez, and I'm here representing Habitat for Humanity Greater San Francisco. And I'm a homeowner at the Rollison Road, and we represent Partnership Courtyard as our homeowners association. And I happen to be on the board there. I'm the president. And I live there also. So I'm here to represent our community and to ask people to consider building the downtown area, some homes there for people who need it. I've been here in Redwood City. I was born and raised here in Redwood City. I've seen all the changes. I can remember when the firehouse used to be where the public library was, and how this used to be the public library. The city has grown a lot, and because it's grown a lot, it has needs. And it needs homes, and it needs affordable homes. And I'm here to represent for those people who need those affordable homes. I've gone to school with a lot of people here in Redwood City, and some of them have left Redwood City because it's not enough, they just can't afford it. I have good friends who still talk about the good old days and how things were, and how things are changing, and how hard and difficult it is and challenging to afford the homes here. I only ask that you reconsider this, and just keep this in mind as we get closer and closer to looking at homes that are affordable. And again, it takes a lot of work, and I know what that means, and I know, hearing it from people, how difficult and challenging it is to be a homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you. Merrily Robinson, followed by Dee Eva.
Hi, my name's Merrily Robinson, and tonight I brought my daughter with me because I know I was here 50 years ago, and my mom brought me to city council, and we were celebrating the centennial. And that was pretty exciting. I was in fourth grade, and I still remember, there was a little parade out on Flat Jefferson, and this was city hall, but we didn't have our meetings here for city council. It was over at the county auditorium, whatever. And so, you know, my mom is and will be a great memory. She's 97, and she has taught me to stand up for what I think is right, and to go down and fight city hall if I need to. And as you know, I've been here many times. And she taught me, and Virginia Avenue used to be a dead-end street, along with Fairview Avenue, Oak Avenue, Ruby, Unipro. And the city wanted, the fire department, wanted to get a freeway through there, from Roosevelt Plaza to Virginia, I mean, to Woodside Plaza, not really that, but to get the fire trucks through there. And my mom fought for a couple of years until we were 12, and that was a good time because then I moved on to Kennedy School then, and it was easier than walking through the creek to get to the school. But it was a great neighborhood to grow up on, and you can't imagine it today because it really is a very busy thoroughfare. But I appreciate that my mom taught me how to stand out and lead and stand up for what I believe is so. And I've always been there for women's rights and stuff, and I remember my brother was an activist at Berkeley, and through that, you know, I learned that I could stand up and have girls be able to wear pants at Kennedy, and I started the petitions and the sit-ins, and I appreciate their leadership that, you know, taught me how to go about it. And so I hope that I inspire my daughter to do the same. She's 11. So thank you.
Thank you. Dee Eva?
Good evening. My name is Dee Eva, and I'm co-chair of the sesquicentennial Celebration Committee for the city of Redwood City. I think most of you in the room know that Redwood City is turning 150 years this May 11th, and I just thought I'd give you a little update on what we've got going on. We're in full swing with fundraising and selling ads for the commemorative magazine that we're going to be publishing, and so if you haven't gotten your money and your ad copy-in, please do so because the deadline is March 15th. You may have seen a table out in the lobby. We're selling logo pins for a donation of $20, and we ask that you wear it proudly. Half the people who walked in here said, "Oh, I forgot my pin." I just put mine on every morning. We're also giving away collectible commemorative coins. They're wooden coins, and they have pictures of historic buildings on them in Redwood City. We have three out now, and we're gonna have two more. And our first big event is going to be this Saturday, March 25th, at Mezzi's Park. It's going to be Pioneer's Day and the Arbor Day ceremonies, and it's going to be a very nice event. We're going to have a reenactment of an 1860s miners camp. Park and Rec is gonna have some fun activities for kids and a barbecue, and if you're there, if you're around from 11 to 2, please come by. On Wednesday, April 5th, we're gonna have the first of our speaker series, and this is gonna be, where did you go to school? It's gonna be an interesting... It's going to be an interesting topic with people talking about the elementary schools, Sequoia High School, and Kenyatta College. We're also having contests for the oldest living Redwood City resident. We have the oldest business in Redwood City, the oldest family-owned business in Redwood City. And so if you go to our website, rwc150.org, you can enter the contest if you know the oldest person in Redwood City. We do have one person who's 102, so I don't know if anybody can beat that. We're also featuring Faces of Redwood City, a project of 150 portraits of people who live, work, or study in the city. And you can find that also on the website, and we're encouraging community members to nominate someone that they believe represents the diversity and the spirit of Redwood City. The library's doing several other events called Redwood City Then and Now, and you can share photos of your history here in Redwood City and also do projects with them to create different books and things. We have a full calendar of events. Again, rwc150.org, if you'll check that out. You can find out everything that's going on, and believe me, there's much more. I think you're going to really enjoy the summer. May 20th is our big festival in flower extravaganza in downtown Redwood City. Look for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you in the committee for all the hard work that you've been doing. I know that it's turned into a full-time job, and you're probably glad we only turn 150 once. I guess we do it twice, but we probably won't be around for the second one. So just a rough estimate.
We'll all be here.
Yeah, we could win that contest if we were. Before we get started tonight, I want to acknowledge that there are many who have served and paved the way for those of us that currently serve in the council, and I want to take a moment. We have two former mayors here, I believe. Former Mayor Brent Britchke is here somewhere in the audience. There's some, there he is. And former Mayor Georgie LaBerge is here as well. Thank you. In addition to former mayors, we have, if you're on a board, commission, or committee, raise your hand. It's great. We have a big crowd of board, commission, and committee members. Thank you. Also want to recognize some elected officials that are with us here tonight. I believe we have a representative from Senator Jerry Hill's office, Joan Detler. I'd be here. There she is. We have a representative from Assemblymember Kevin Mullins' office, Mario Rendon is here. It's Mario. We have a representative, some supervisor, Dave Pine's office, Dave Berudo is here. There he is. The Honorable Mayor from East Palo Alto, Larry Moody is here. Larry, Larry, there he is. Also have a couple of school board members from the Redwood City Elementary School District. We have Alisa McAvoy and Janet Lawson. And from the Sequoia Union High School District Board, we have Alan Sarver. And I'm sorry if I missed anybody. That's what I had on my list. We also have, sitting in the front row, the newly, very newly crowned Ms. Redwood City, Elizabeth Trin. Thank you for joining us. So tonight, like last year, we'll look a little different from State of the City addresses in the past. Tonight, we will celebrate our accomplishments of 2016 and highlight some of the strategic initiatives and goals we have for 2017 in a video presentation. So I hope you'll join me in watching this brief video presentation. Thank you. Yes, thank you. And I want to thank our staff. Our staff put a huge amount of work in putting that on. And I also wanted to recognize, I failed to recognize earlier, our three council appointees that are here, giving our entire staff direction, our city manager, Melissa Stevenson Diaz, who's here tonight. Our newly-appointed city attorney and first State of the City address as the city attorney, Veronica Ramirez. And our city clerk Sylvia Von der Linden, whose staff does a lot of work just getting everything organized out in the lobby and all that. And this is Sylvia's last State of the City address. I know she's going to kill me for saying that. So please give a huge send-off to Sylvia on her last State of the City address. I'll get a nasty gram email later about that. So the reason that I wanted to use that video presentation to highlight the things that we've accomplished and the things that we're focused on in 2017 is because I want us to spend the majority of our time tonight talking about our community's greatest asset, the people of Redwood City. A year ago, in my first State of the City address as mayor, I talked about the most important resource we have as a community, our people, those that choose to live, work, serve, and/or play in Redwood City. And tonight, like last year, my colleagues are going to help me out, and they're going to highlight Redwood City's strategic priorities, the seven strategic priorities that you saw right there or seeing, by personifying our community, by telling stories of examples of people, companies, organizations that personify our community achieving all the great things that you just heard about. So I hope the stories that you hear tonight will help humanize what we're about as a city. We'll take the traditional list of all the things we've done and the traditional list of all the things we want to do and put some faces to them and some names to them because the stories you're going to hear tonight personify exactly what we're about as a city. Starting off our stories tonight will be Councilmember Jeff Gee with our housing initiative.
Thank you, Mayor Seibert, and thank you all for joining us this evening. I'd like to invite you to close your eyes for a moment and just imagine. You wake up in the morning, turn on the coffee pot, you can smell the coffee brewing. And you go through your morning routine. You have breakfast, shower, get dressed, and get ready to go to work. You close the door and turn the lock. You turn around and you walk, and in eight minutes, you're in your office. On many days, this is what Megan is able to do as a resident of Kenyatta College Vista, where she lives with her husband Jason. Megan works at Kenyatta College. As a resident of Kenyatta Vista, she and her husband can live in Redwood City, become a part of our community, save money to buy a home, and invest that time that would otherwise be spent on the freeway into our community. If Kenyatta Vista did not exist, she would be commuting from the South Bay and spending time on the freeway being a road warrior. Instead, with that time, she can spend more time in Redwood City, be more connected to our community, and participate in our community events. Megan and Jason moved back to the area two years ago and moved into Kenyatta Vista a year and a half ago. She's committed to being a part of Redwood City, especially in her role as the college's Director of Marketing, Communications, and Public Relations. Living in Redwood City is very personal for her. It helps her connect with residents and feel the vibe of our community. A number of her colleagues at the college live in Redwood City and love it. They say they want, they make you want to live here. Being so close to work and being part of the community allows her to invest and want to become invested in Redwood City. Please join me in welcoming Megan Rodriguez and her husband Jason. I think they're in the back. Megan, Jason, stand up, please. Over here, I'm sorry. Thank you for joining us this evening. My second story is about Redwood City's climate best-by-government test. It's on our gateway signs here on Broadway. However, these signs were not always here. Teresa's parents chose to live in Redwood City because of the weather well before the city signs went up. Allow me to introduce to you again Teresa Ramirez. As a young girl, Teresa and her friends would ride through the greenhouses and rosegardens off of Roosevelt in the days when Redwood City was mostly an agriculture community. As time went on and as she grew into a teenager, other peninsula cities made their way onto her radar. No matter, though, Redwood City was her home. She attended Notre Dame, Belmont, went to Kenyatta College, then on to UC Santa Cruz. With twins and a girl, renting in the 80s and 90s was doable. However, as times changed, it became harder. When Habitat for Humanity came to Redwood City, it gave Teresa and her family an opportunity to own a home. But though for 500 hours of sweat equity and the help of many volunteers, she was the proud recipient of a key to her own very, to her own home. This stability has reaped rewards. Her daughter Rosie went to six schools in seven years, all before sixth grade. But so many schools in such a short time, it was hard to make friends, invite classmates over to study, and it was even harder to find a place at home to do homework. Having a habitat home changed all of that. Homeownership provided financial stability, the ability to save money, and then allow Rosie to go to college and graduate from San Jose State University with a degree in political science. She plans on attending USC this fall to begin her work on her master's degree. Being a homeowner in a habitat community is a firsthand insight into what giving back to the community means. It's not only about having a home, it's about being part of a much larger community, giving back and investing in the city that they both call home. Teresa's a mom, a teacher, and as you heard, president of her homeowners association. As the mayor shared this evening, these stories and the theme for our State of the City, "People: Our Community's Greatest Asset," it's about Megan and her husband Jason. It's about Teresa and her children and the many stories of individuals, residents, and families that exist and flourish throughout our community. Among the many things that both Megan and Teresa spoke and shared with me is that it's all about giving back, connecting to our community, and investing themselves into Redwood City. The council has recognized that the region has a housing and affordability crisis. This is why last year, the council added housing to our key strategic initiatives. There are a number of council initiatives underway to promote and maintain housing affordability and to create new affordable housing. We need projects such as Kenyatta Vista, Habitat, Bradford Street, and more. So we ask that you stay engaged, stay connected with the council, and help us make these projects and ideas, turn them into reality. So with that, I'd like to turn the program over to my colleague, Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you, Councilmember Gee. When you think about transportation, you think about, you know, buses and trains and other things, but locally, what we have is a lot of great stories of folks being able to use transportation to really meet their needs and give them dignity. And the first one that I had the pleasure of learning about is Gloria. Gloria's 86 years old. She gets her meals from Meals on Wheels. She's afraid to cook because she said she'll burn her house down. She doesn't get the nutrition she needs, so Meals on Wheels brings her nutritious foods every day. Her son lives on the East Coast, so she can't really, she doesn't really have visitors. So she looks forward to these folks coming to serve her every day a nutritious meal. And, you know, it lets her live alone, lets her live alone safely, but most of all, in dignity. So that type of program in transportation really helps our community and gets, we have someone special by the name of Gloria that lives in our community that benefits from that. Another person that I got to meet by doing, looking at transportation in a bigger picture is a person by the name of Jim. Jim is blind, and he lives in Casa de Redwood. Now, Jim wasn't able to get to any place because of his disability and because he didn't have a transportation. So he hadn't felt grass under his feet for 15 years until the shuttle came to pick him up and took him to the Veterans Senior Center. And like Jim, there were many others that get to go from Casa de Redwood, the Veterans Senior Center, and get to go to places like Valoli, like the Veterans Senior Center, like other places where they get to be, because of the transportation, because of shuttles that move them around, are able to take advantage of our community. He's a resident of our community. He's able to have that mobility even though he can't do it himself. I want to talk about Diane. Diane is very proud of her family. She says that they have really focused on, you know, being the family of transportation. They have one car that they share between the three of them. They work in Menlo Park, and it's very important for her and her husband, they get through from Redwood City to Menlo Park on bikes. And this, you saw one of the initiatives about the corridor in Al Camino. That's very important to them. And they've taught their daughter how to go to the library, how to go to their 13-year-old daughter to also be using transportation now on bikes. And we've really tried in our city to make sure that we have more pedestrian and bike-friendly roads, which is a very important mode of transportation, especially in our downtown. The last person that I want to talk about with regards to transportation is Maria. Maria is a young girl that moved here to the United States in June of 2016. She's 10 years old. She heard about the spoke program at her school, and she wanted to learn... She heard about the Spoke Program at her school, and she wanted to learn, to really be part of going to school on her bicycle. It's called the Spoke Program. So her teacher told her about her, and she was very excited about this because she said, "I get to learn and I get to do what I used to be able to do in my country, be on a bike and go to school." She goes back, she teaches her siblings. Her teacher said that when she returns from these spoke sessions, she is so excited because she now can have this mobility at ten years old, especially being new to this country. So these are ways that we, it's a different way of looking at transportation that folks in our community of all ages are able to be mobile in our community, and we're so proud to be able to represent them. The next area that I'd like to touch on a little bit is the area of government relations. In government relations, we are very lucky to have folks that have come to us and said, "You know what? What our city has been able to do for us has been very important. We've had these needs." I want to read something to you from someone who said, "It's no exaggeration to say that this person from the city saved my life for my wife and me, and they saved considerable expense and aggravation. Without his help, we may needlessly open one or more of the walls in our house at considerable expense looking for the source of a problem. There was a problem in their house. We are so thankful that Redwood City has caring people such as Mr. Ricketts serving our city. Please convey our appreciation." And on and on I hear things. Your crews are doing an fantastic job. They look terrific. They're so flexible. So in government relations, it's the one-on-one, the folks that you come across with, not only the folks in public work, it's the folks that you come in the parks, the PD, our fire department. The emails that we get that sometimes you don't get to see are amazing of the type of work that we do and the relationship, the importance of our relationship with all of you as community members. And now I'd like to turn this over to my colleague, Ms. Mazur.
Thank you. So the other day, I heard a story about a little girl who was born in Redwood City. Her grandparents lived on El Camino Real, and that's where she came home from the hospital. And they boarded workers from the tannery in Redwood City. When she was in about second grade, her family moved to a new house still in Redwood City, but they were the first Italian family in the neighborhood. So one day, she was over playing at a friend's house and went inside to get a glass of water, where she heard the adults say, "Their family's very nice for being Italian." And what she shared with me is that that comment has never left her, and it serves as a reminder for her of the importance of inclusion and acceptance. Redwood City reflects inclusion through its belief in the community of all, for all ages. It means we create unique contributions that youth, seniors, and residents of all ages and abilities bring to our community and provide abundant opportunities for lifelong learning, healthy development, physical activity, and social connection. Helping make that happen in Redwood City is that nice Italian girl. She now serves on the Senior Affairs Commission, and I can tell you, if you haven't met her, when you do, she makes everyone feel appreciated and welcomed. After many years of attending event after event, as a wife of a city council member, Barbara Richkey, Barbara, raise your hand. Joined the Parks and Rec Commission because she thought it sounded fun. Her enthusiasm for community service did not wane in those eight years of fun on the Parks and Rec Commission, so ten years ago, she joined the Senior Affairs Commission. In that time, she's championed many efforts to ensure that the voices of seniors are heard and the needs of seniors are met. One of her many passions as an advocate is senior housing. And despite the fact that she and Brent held their wedding reception in the current Veterans Memorial Senior Center, she's ready to move forward. And she and I share a vision for the new senior center in partnership with the Y. You saw a little clip of it earlier, which we continue to move forward in this city. To me, Barbara's work is a good lesson for all of us to remember that we need to continue to have an interest in our seniors, that we should realize one of her visions, which is a Senior Day downtown, and we need to make sure that Redwood City welcomes and includes our seniors in all areas, but in particular, in our new downtown. On the surface, Barbara Richkey and Cheyenne Weira are quite different. Barbara's lived in Redwood City her whole life, and her roots here run deep, as you've heard. She and her husband grew up in the same neighborhood. Cheyenne, Cheyenne, can you raise your hand? Cheyenne's right here. Moved to Redwood City three years ago with his parents. Barbara's a grandmother, Cheyenne's a teenager. But their dedication to community, their willingness to get involved and challenge us all to think differently, link them together, and demonstrate to us how we weave a fabric of a community for all ages. One other thing they do share, sixty-three years after Barbara graduated from Sequoia High School, Cheyenne will become a graduate of the same school this year.
Yeah.
Yay, Cheyenne. And he's got some good college options to, so. So while it remains to be seen whether, like Barbara, he'll still hang out with his friends from high school many years later, it is very certain that Cheyenne is leaving his mark on Sequoia and as such, on our community. I first met Cheyenne when he emailed the council to ask to meet, and when the mayor and I met with him, it was readily apparent why, in his third year at Sequoia, he was voted the Associated Student Body President. He contacted us because he wanted to see what Sequoia students could do to get more involved in the community. He moved to Redwood City from Sri Lanka during his freshman year of high school and started Sequoia with only a few weeks left in the school year. He told me he took the leadership class, which is sort of prepares you for Associated Student Body, because it looked interesting, and in Sri Lanka, you didn't have choices in classes, and you just took academic classes. So he jumped right in. He helped with the senior check-in for graduation just a few weeks after starting school, and his hard work captured the eye of the ASB teacher, who asked him to join it even though he hadn't completed that requirement in his freshman year. In his first year with ASB, Cheyenne led the Community Service Committee for ASB, and soon started questioning, "What does community service really mean?" He realized that to fulfill the name, he wanted service to extend beyond usual penny drive and to really serve the Redwood City community. His leadership has inspired this year's Community Service Committee to do a food drive and to deliver food to the homeless, among many other community projects. In an effort to reflect Redwood City and Sequoia High School's diverse population, Cheyenne has worked with the ASB teacher to expand the diversity in the group. They've changed their requirements, so students who might not be able to take leadership because maybe they're learning English, or they have credits to make up when they get into high school, are now able to apply to be part of ASB. Current ASB members have gone out into different classes to talk about the group and what they do, as well as invite students to apply. So when I asked how it's going, Cheyenne said it is working. They do have more applications this year, and they're much more diverse than they've ever been in the past. But maintaining a realistic and quite modest view, he readily admits that these changes have a long way to go, and he hopes that next year's ASB students can take the learning and build off the mistakes from this year, so the kids do become more integrated into the community. I think that's something we can, we all can and should do as we continue to build our community for all ages. Our Parks and Rec programs truly span all ages with classes for babies and parents, summer camps for kids of all ages, adult art classes, senior exercise programs. We offer learning, early learning opportunities in our libraries and senior meals at the Pharaoh's Community Center. And walking over here from my home, it was clear that we are a community of all ages. And in many ways, we've been realizing our vision for our community for all ages. We won't do everything perfectly, but we can take the learnings, build on our mistakes, and make sure we continue to integrate everyone into our community. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Borgans.
Thank you. I have the honor tonight to talk about our public safety, one employee, and two extraordinary community volunteers. So we will start with our fire department. Their cadet program started in 2003 and has resulted in twenty-one cadets being hired into full-time firefighter positions throughout the Bay Area, with about seven of those local here in Redwood City. Beyond the day-to-day work, our firefighters are involved with many community activities. Those activities will benefit the neighborhood schools, neighborhood themselves, your children, our families. And some of those come from the Junior Fire Academy, Special Olympics, July Fourth Celebration, the Burn Relay, Redwood City Toy and Book Drive, the 9/11 Memorial Stairclimb, Sammentail County Public Memorial Service, the CERT program. It's just a small list of what they do for our community, above and beyond what the ordinary day is for the firefighters. Many of these are helped through dedicated volunteers, and tonight, I'd like to highlight one of those volunteers, Lynn Gardner. This year, Redwood City Firefighters Association Creative Smile Program, for the first time, teamed up with Lynn Gardner to collect and deliver backpacks and school supplies to those in need. Lynn Gardner runs the Palo Alto Rowing Club and handles the daunting task of managing all the toys that flow through Toyland, the Toyland Program and Warehouse, which is run by the Redwood City Fire Department and the Redwood City Police Department. And it is an all-year event. If you've ever had the opportunity to help and participate in this program, it is amazing the way they have it so organized. You have to get involved this year, please. This year, she collected backpacks for several years. She decided that this is what our community needed. She saw the need. She came to the Creative Smile Foundation and said, "We need to collect backpacks." So she accomplished this by placing barrels at all the Redwood City and San Carlos Fire stations. The barrels were also placed in all the city libraries. The turnout was fantastic, with over two-hundred-and-fifty backpacks collected. These backpacks were then delivered to the children of families that qualify through the Pharaoh's Community Center and the Redwood City Parks and Recreation Department. Community volunteers like this, we cannot do without. So please join me in celebrating Lynn Gardner as being one of our volunteer extraordinaires for this program. Now on to the Redwood City Police Department. The Redwood City Police created many programs that are aimed to create community engagement and conversation. They accomplish this through their Coffee with Cops, they meet with community at various locations to hold discussion with community members, homeless outreach team, neighborhood watch programs, they promote community engagements through their webpages, their Facebook, their Twitter, their Nickstall, I don't even know what that is, their Pinterest, I don't know what that is, video chat in both English and Spanish. There is no excuse not to be able to communicate with the Redwood City Police Department. Here is just one example of how your police department has provided us a service above and beyond their expected daily job description. On September 11, 2016, officers were dispatched to a Marshall Street apartment regarding a report of a baby not breathing, every parent's nightmare. Officer Bizarro responded to the incident. He was the first officer to arrive on the scene. Upon his arrival, the officer located the parents, Elvis and Veronica Calderon, in the rear parking lot of the apartment complex. The couple appeared frantic and were holding their two-month-old infant. The officer immediately took control of the child and began lifesaving efforts. He noticed the child was turning blue from lack of oxygen and began performing chest compressions. He also managed to calm the parents while he was simultaneously performing CPR on their infant. He also had the presence of mind to move towards the front of the complex so that when the Redwood City Fire Department showed up with their emergency personnel, they could quickly transport the baby to the hospital where she did make a full recovery. Because of his quick and instincts on what to do and how to remain calm, Officer Bizarro was recognized for this heroism at the Redwood City Police Department's annual event. So they keep us safe, they keep engaged, they protect our community, they save a life. That is the culture of the police department. It is one of inclusiveness in their motto, being, providing excellent service with integrity and respect. Please join me in thanking Officer Bizarro for being a fantastic and extraordinary Redwood City Police Officer. Come on forward. Come on. All the way. You cannot hide. Thank you. Our next story is about an extraordinary volunteer, Claudia Galvin. Claudia first began her relationship with the police department when she attended the first Spanish-language version of the Citizens Police Academy program in 2012. Having immigrated from Mexico herself, Claudia understood that better collaboration between police and the Latino community could bring greater safety and engagement to that community. Claudia immediately became a uniformed civilian volunteer under the Redwood City Police Department's Volunteer in Policing Service, the VIPS, V-I-P-S, and has risen to the rank of lieutenant over the last four years. Claudia has donated hundreds of hours annually to the VIPS program, developed numerous outreach programs targeting local Latino youth and parents, and has assisted in the recruitment of two dozen new volunteers. Most recently, Claudia obtained certification as an instructor of the nationally acclaimed Parent Project Parenting Skills Course, and in 2016, volunteered her own time to teach the very first Loving Solutions Parenting Class to parents who are raising younger children. I could have used that. Her volunteering and linguistic skills have made it possible for the department to offer this program. Claudia has been a Redwood City resident for many years and is married with three children, and she still finds the time to volunteer at this level. She will begin teaching another parenting class this spring and will continue facilitating strong connections between the police department and the community it serves. Again, a community volunteer, we cannot do without. Please help us celebrate Claudia Galvin. Stand up. We thank all of our volunteers for their dedication to our Redwood City community. We cannot do it without the volunteers, and it only shows how inclusive of community we are when we have volunteers like this. I'd like now to pass this on to my councilmember, Diane Howard.
Thank you, Councilmember Borgans. And now I'd like to speak with you about another one of Redwood City's strategic initiatives, community building, what it means and how you can get involved. As an analogy, I'm going to use Disneyland. Now Disneyland is a magical city, much like Redwood City. Many of you have gone to Disneyland, had a fabulous experience, and then you go back to your home. What you may not have given much thought to is the army of people who work behind the scenes to make your experience so special. The same is true with Redwood City. We have multiple individuals and organizations that work behind the scenes to make Redwood City the wonderful community that it truly is. One of these special organizations is City Trees, an all-volunteer group founded in 2000 by two good friends, Jane Taylor and Jack Stevens. Ira Ruskin, who was the mayor at that time, realized the great potential and facilitated a partnership between City Trees and our Public Works Department. Their mission is to improve the quality of life in Redwood City by promoting urban forestry efforts. They plant and maintain trees along our streets, at our schools, and other publicly-owned property, planting not only for today, but for future generations. To date, City Trees has planted over three thousand trees in Redwood City, as well as pruning and maintaining the trees through their formative years. Redwood City is consistently listed as a Tree City USA every year, due in large part to the efforts of this great group of volunteers. I know there are members of City Trees in the audience. Could you please give them a round of applause? Another group that greatly enriches our community is the Sequoia Awards. The legacy of the Sequoia Awards began in 1991, when Pete Uchelli and five of his dear friends ponied up $100 each to provide a scholarship to recognize a student who demonstrated the true spirit of volunteerism in our community. This all-volunteer board of the Sequoia Awards believe that the future of tomorrow are the young people of today, and that value continues to guide them every day. Last year, celebrating their 25th year, the Sequoia Awards awarded $200,000 in scholarship money. Many of the students who have received these scholarships Many of the students who have received these scholarships recognize what has been done for them, and to show their gratitude, will return to our community and pay it forward to the next generation. I urge you to go online and visit their website. Please read the stories of these remarkable students. They will truly inspire you. I'd like you to give a round of applause to the Sequoia Award volunteers, many of whom are sitting here tonight, but if you raise your hand, that would be nice too, but I'm not sure. They're shy. There they go. There are many more wonderful groups and organizations who build community that enhance our Redwood City experience. On our Redwood City website, there are many volunteer organizations listed looking for your participation. The city also has many boards, committees, and commission opportunities for you to become more involved. I'm involved with the Pride and Beautification Committee. No need to apply. You just show up with your family and friends for the cleanups that we advertise, roll up your sleeves, and share the day with us. What a great opportunity for a teaching moment with your children, demonstrating the importance of taking good care of your environment and having pride in our community. Our next event will be Saturday, May 13th. We will feed you with breakfast and lunch, and you'll have a wonderful time, and I hope you will join us. All the information you need is on our website. Now, I've only scratched the surface of the list of opportunities to get more involved in Redwood City. So I urge you to do more than enjoy our Disneyland and then go home. Find a group, start your own, something that will help make Redwood City a magical kingdom for all. And now I'd like to turn it over to our Vice Mayor, Ian Bain.
Thank you, Councilmember Howard. These are all fantastic stories. When the mayor had this idea that we would tell stories through people, I said, "This is great. This is exactly what our community is about." And when you think about Redwood City and what makes it special, I'm sure you think about some of the businesses that you like to frequent. Businesses are not only important to our economic stability and growth, but they're also important to our quality of life, and they're places that enhance living here in Redwood City. So I'm going to talk about two very special businesses today. The first one I'd like to talk about is Gourmet House Stout. And I'll talk about how many of you, I think you're chuckling because you may be familiar with this place. I'll talk a little bit about how I discovered it, and then I'll tell a little bit about their story. I actually discovered it in 2009. I just happened to be walking behind Gourmet House Stout, and I saw that there was a beer garden. I saw a little sign there, and I said, "Wow, a beer garden here in Redwood City? I've got to check this out." And I went in there, and there were all these different German beers to choose from. It was great. It was like being in heaven. I had a really fun afternoon. And then, unfortunately, my little secret got out because somebody found an iPhone prototype in this little beer garden. And you may have remembered that incident, which really put it on the map, and then I said, "Okay, there goes my secret." So in this picture here on the bottom right, you have Volker Stout and his wife. And Volker runs the beer garden, but the business was started by his parents, who happen to be here today, Lothar and Lucy Stout, if you wouldn't mind standing up and let everybody see who you are. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Stout moved here in the 1950s, and in 1975, they opened a flower shop. And hopefully, I have all my details right here. Flower House Stout. And in the 1980s, they bought the building, luckily for us. So owning the building, of course, allows them to run the business the way that they see fit. And as the flower business started to dry up a little bit, they began to diversify and imported German foods and drinks. And then a café started when Mr. Stout started cooking for special events and family, I believe. And every Saturday, they still do a big family feast, if I have my facts right here. So then the beer garden opened up and expanded and became wildly popular, as I said. So I highlight Gourmet House Stout because I discovered it through the beer garden, but then I went in and started discovering things in the store as well. When my wife and my daughter and stepdaughter were getting their nails done across the street, I went in there just to kill time and ended up leaving with about $50 worth of merchandise. So if you haven't had a chance, please go visit. It is one of the businesses that makes our city special. It's the kind of mom-and-pop business that we really want to work to retain going forward as the city changes and grows. So thank you. The next business I'd like to highlight, now that we've spent a little bit of time looking at a business that's preserving the past and tradition, I'd like to spend some time talking about a business that really has its eye on the future. So if we could go to the next slide. The company I'd like to talk about is called Impossible Foods. And I first heard about Impossible Foods reading the Wall Street Journal, and I saw an article that said, "Meet the Veggie Burger That Bleeds", which got my attention. And I watched a video about it, about a former Stanford professor named Patrick Brown, not to be confused with the other Pat Brown that we have in our community who's very well-known. And he decided to start a business that was focused on making what he calls "plant-based meat". So basically, he takes texturized plant proteins, and he analyzed what makes meat so delicious for people. Why do people crave meat? And if you look at it, it's really a bunch of chemicals that create the flavors, the smells, the sensations that people associate with eating meat. And he decided to start a business that was looking at a more sustainable way, a healthier way, to create meat alternatives. And so I watched this video on the Wall Street Journal site with great fascination. They were showing how the process made it. It looked like raw meat. When it was put on the grill, it crisped up, it burned, it turned brown. It did all the things that you would expect a hamburger to do. And then they had people taste-testing it, and they were saying, "This is really delicious. I want to try this." And in digging around, trying to find out more about this company, where I could try one of these hamburgers, I found that they were actually headquartered right here in Redwood City. That this is a startup based right here in my hometown. So of course, I reached out to them and said, "I want a tour of your factory." So up here on the top left, you'll see Dr. Patrick Brown. I had the opportunity to tour their facility a few weeks ago. They're out near the port of Redwood City. They're going to be expanding in the near future because there is so much demand for their products. They are actually in esteemed restaurants in New York and San Francisco, a handful of other places. This year, they plan to expand to 100 different restaurants throughout the nation. And the process of watching is really, really just fascinating. I mean, it's all natural ingredients. What you see here that looks like laboratory equipment, that's where they extract the key ingredient of this, which is called heme. Heme is the key ingredient that's found in blood, which gives meat its distinct taste. But what few people know is it can also be extracted from plants. And so by extracting this from plants and mixing it with some other natural ingredients, they're able to make plant-based meats that are nitrate-free, they're hormone-free, they are no cholesterol. And they can really be engineered to whatever taste people want, if you like a certain kind of meat or not. So they started this hamburger, like I said, it's been wildly successful. I told them, as they expand to those 100 restaurants, I want one here in Redwood City. And I had the opportunity to actually try it myself. It was delicious. And it was fascinating to watch Dr. Brown talk. He talked about how he sees... Somebody asked him, "In 20 years, where do you see this going?" And he said, "In 20 years, I see half of the world's population, half the meat that the world eats, will be plant-based meat." And the reason why that's important is because it uses 85% less land, significantly less water. It is much more sustainable, far fewer greenhouse emissions. So we have a company that is literally changing the world as we speak, based right here in Redwood City. These are two amazing examples of the kind of economic development efforts that we want to focus on going forward, and the kinds of businesses we want to keep here in Redwood City. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our mayor to sum up.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bain. Please join me in thanking all my colleagues in the city council for the work that they did. Tonight's story should also explain why Vice Mayor Bain immediately jumped on doing economic development because he got to go to a beer place and a burger place. Some advantages to being in the meeting where we first talked about this idea. As we celebrate our 150th anniversary as a city this year, we will attend events, hear stories, read articles, and see videos that portray our past and our present. Throughout Redwood City's history and into the present, we are known and will continue to be known for many amazing things. This is truly an amazing community. Here's a short list of some of the things I thought of as I was writing my comments. Our weather, of course. We are still weather-best by government test, although the last couple of days may not have proved that. Our port. Our diverse industries, from logging to Frank's Tannery to Ampex, and now many cutting-edge software and high-tech companies and biomed companies. We have wonderful parks like Red Morton Park. We have two large full-service hospitals. We have award-winning libraries, amazing schools, programs for all ages, fiscal stability, public safety services, and a traditionally low crime rate. Redwood Shores is a planned community, recycled water, a vibrant downtown with all of its restaurants and other opportunities. We have Stanford in Redwood City now. We have our dedicated nonprofit organizations and faith-based organizations. And we have entertainment and art in a wide variety of forums, all the way from performing arts to painted utility boxes. And there are many, many more things that I simply don't have time tonight to mention. Reflect with me for a minute. So how did all that happen? And how will Redwood City continue to thrive in the future? It's simple. It's our people. It's all of you. It's everybody you saw mentioned. It's decades and decades in the past. Our people are our greatest asset. All of us that live, work, serve, and/or play in Redwood City are part of that past and part of that future. If you agree with me and believe that people are our greatest asset, then I would ask you to consider a few things we need to be doing for each other. And as a side note, it's been said that if you want to change the world for the better, the first thing you do is draw a circle around yourself and start there. So before I start these comments, I want you to know that I'm fully aware that all of these areas that I'm going to talk about are areas that I need significant improvement in. If people are truly our greatest asset, we need to start by slowing down. Raking leaves in my front yard this past fall, I witnessed a vehicle using the center-turn lane on Alameda de las Pulgas to pass another vehicle at a high rate of speed. Driving is only one area that's indicative of our need to take a deep breath and slow our lives down. Imagine all the great things we can be missing as we hurry on to the next thing that seems so important. And specifically, if you're that person who wants to bring your fast-paced world behind the wheel, for the safety of our children and everyone in our community, we are continuing. You saw that we were completing a transportation study. We're continuing to look at traffic calming in different areas. We continue to look at ways to slow you down. If that doesn't work, I guarantee the men and women of our police department will be happy to help. To show that all people are included when we talk about our community's greatest asset, we need to celebrate our differences. Celebrating the diversity in our community without judgment is essential to our future success. And not just the ethnic diversity, but the diversity of ideas, choices, and the diversity of hopes for our community. We shouldn't see the differences of opinions we all have as divisions among us, but rather as opportunities to learn something new. Regardless of how long you've been here or how new you are to our community, your opinions matter all the same. Recently, we had the opportunity as a council to become a welcoming city. I would encourage us all that the next step is getting those concepts off the pages of the resolution we passed and into our everyday lives and live like we're a welcoming city. Improved communication. Tonight specifically, I'm talking about active listening and less debate in our interpersonal communication. At our recent council retreat, former Assembly Member Rich Gordon was talking about the current political scene, both locally and nationally, and this is what he said, a powerful quote. "We spend most of our time in debate mode, listening to people with the intent to find flaws, where we should be spending most of our time in dialogue mode, listening with the intent to understand." The Redwood City conversations have been a great example of this, and I am hopeful that it will become more of a natural way we communicate, not just when we're at events designed for active listening. As we emphasize people, it's natural that we need to connect with one another. So I ask you, pause for a minute. Think about this. Don't raise your hands. How well do you know the people that you live near? Could you rely on them in an emergency? And more importantly, could they rely on you? Henry Nowans said this, this is a quote, "We become neighbors when we are willing to cross the road for one another." Notice I didn't ask earlier, "How well do you know your neighbors?" Because do you have neighbors, or do you simply have people that you live close to? To this end, we're reinvigorating our neighborhood associations. When Vice Mayor Bain and I first met, right after becoming a mayor and vice mayor, one of the first things we both shared right off the bat was, "We've got to reinvigorate our neighborhood associations." As cities grow, and not just grow in size, but grow in complexity, and our busy schedules wrap their arms around us, it's that small-group feel that we need to reinvigorate in Redwood City. We feel strongly that as our city grows, it is important that our neighborhoods are more connected. If you want to be involved, if you want to help reinvigorate your neighborhood, we've even redrawn the maps to be more relevant with the neighborhood associations. Shoot us an email. We'd love to help. We've actually got a meeting Thursday night where we're going to begin the process of actively reinvigorating our neighborhood associations. And finally, if people truly are our greatest asset, we need to invest our time in each other. There are incredible needs in this community. We've heard tonight about housing, our aging population, homelessness, educating our adults and educating our children, hunger, coaching sports, and this list could go on into the night as well. Neither the government nor any single group will ever be the solution. We all will be part of the solution, and the solution involves rolling up our sleeves and getting involved and giving our most precious resource, our time, to our greatest asset, our people. The great people, companies, and organizations that my colleagues highlighted tonight are only a fraction, a small fraction, of the example of the thousands more like them in our community. And I guarantee, while they all have many differences, they have those five things in common. As I finish, please join me in making Redwood City thrive long into the future by focusing on our people, our community's greatest asset. Thank you for being here tonight. We're adjourned until our meeting of the 13th of March.